Good morning, everyone. This the Wednesday, March 5th, 2025, regular meeting of the Nagshead Board of Commissioners. It's hereby called to order. Before we begin our business today, I want to recognize former Commissioner Susie Walters is here today. Thank you, Susie. You're always welcome. If you will, please join me in a few moments of silence. Now, as you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. That brings us to a recognition and a presentation from the Arts and Culture Committee. Kelly?
Thank you so much. I'm not used to being up here this quickly in a meeting, so I apologize. All right, so go through this quickly. We do this every year, and so there's a lot of repetitive aspects of it, but happy to answer any questions that you may have. So this morning, I would like to give an update on the Town of Nagshead Art and Culture Committee and emphasis, I suppose, on Doughty Park markets and other activities that we are focusing on. We do host multiple types of markets throughout the year, and each cater to a different audience. So that's on the slide that we have in front of you. So our Farmer's Market, that's on Thursdays, June through August. Priority is given to returning vendors, particularly those selling local foods, perishables, and consumables. We have our Family Fun Programs. Those are in the summer. These are themed markets. They're held once a month on Tuesdays. They feature special attractions such as Riptide the Horse from the Corolla Wild Horse Fund, the SPCA, and storytelling events. Then we have our Holiday Markets. Those are in November and December. There's four markets total, three in the daytime, one in the evening, and they all have a holiday atmosphere to them. And then we have our Winter Markets. These are once a month, January through April, and those focus exclusively on food vendors. Moving forward, we did have a very successful Farmer's Market in 2024. We had about 65 vendors, just under half or maybe right at half were specializing in perishables and consumables. We were unable to accept any new artisans due to demand, but we did have farmers from surrounding areas such as Currituck, Creswell, Columbia, Hertford, and Elizabeth City that were there each week, so that was wonderful. As always, the highest visitation was in July. We have our market around the Fourth, so that always brings in a lot of people. And as in previous years, social media and distributing posters around town proves to be the most effective marketing for us. For the 2025 Market, this is just a slide of some of the wonderful things that we have at our markets. For the 2025 Market, that's going to run June 12th through August 21st. Due to the Nagshead Elementary School schedule, we're limited to 11 markets this season so that we don't create parking concerns while school is going on. This market continues to be very popular, which makes it challenging to accommodate those vendors with seniority and to be able to accept new vendors. So we polled previous vendors, and it looks like most all of them are coming back. We're going to have about three to five openings, so Paige is working specifically with farmers, producers, consumables, to fill those openings for this season. So moving forward, our 2024 Summer Concert Series had 10 performances. It's continuing to gain popularity. There's a growing audience, and Paige always comments about the sense of community with returning faces and people bringing snacks and dinners and things with their families to enjoy these concerts, so that's pretty wonderful. In 2025, we've got 12 bands lined up. We do provide sound. That runs about 600 per band. When there's a larger band that provides their own sound, that's great, but that band also usually costs more, so it evens out or ends up being a savings to the town. And then, as always, we do hope that we can get the military band back, but it's not confirmed yet, so Paige is writing that and trying to make sure we're taken into consideration when that's an option. So Family Fun Nights, the Fall Market, and Kids' Day. In 2024, we held three Family Fun Nights, and we had a Kids' Day event. For 2025, we would like to shift the Family Fun Programs to Tuesday mornings. Having them in the evenings, right at 6:00, tends to conflict with people getting off work, getting home, and really unable to get their children there, so talking with Paige, she did feel like if we pulled that back to Tuesday mornings, that there would be, it would be more accessible and more attendance for these kids' events. So we're going to try that out this season, assuming everyone is comfortable with that. We're coordinating with organizations like the Corolla Wild Horse Fund, again, Ascension Music, and some local storytelling groups for our Kids' Night, for our kids' programs this year. And our Kids' Back to School Event is going to be held on August 26th, which will have kids' activities, music, and engagement with the Boys and Fire, which they always love. And it's so wonderful to see other town departments out there getting involved. So 2024 Holiday Markets, we had about 70 vendors. These were three Saturday markets and an evening market, and each market saw around 350 vendors, and there was a strong support from our locals. The Fourth Annual Tree Lighting Ceremony and the Flashlight Candy Cane Hunt, we plan to continue those as usual. And our Winter Markets have proven to be a great success, and the community genuinely appreciates having availability to fresh local foods in these off-seasons. So moving forward, we want to continue the Holiday Markets, but we do want to explore some ways to boost attendance for that evening market. The evening market is beautiful. It's decorated. It's an amazing atmosphere, but there tends to not be a whole lot of sales on that night. So finding ways to generate more sales for air vendors on that evening market is going to be something we're looking to do this season. We want to expand the holiday lighting and decorations at Doughty Park because as these events grow, obviously, the community is very appreciative of that. And our Winter Markets have been very well received, and we will, of course, be offering those next season as well. So some other happenings with art and culture. We continue to offer the fitness programs like yoga and Fitness Fridays. We have a new initiative proposed. It's called Kids Move More. That's going to be Friday mornings in July through July and early August. We're going to continue showing family-friendly movies in the park. We hope to expand that to Barnes Street. We did not see that happen this past season, but we're going to try to make that happen this upcoming fall. And then, as far as our public art and pedestrian safety initiatives, this past season, we had the Honors Art Class for Manio High School paint the intersection at Bonnet Street and Wrightsville Avenue, right there beside Doughty Park. We would like to identify another intersection to work on another crosswalk this upcoming season. The committee held a Paint and Skate after artist Chris Wheeler finished the mural at the skate park by the YMCA, and that was really well-received. We installed two new art panels on our art masks along Beach Road, and we have three or four artists working on those panels again this upcoming season, so looking forward to having some more of those along the Beach Road. And we would like to introduce a new event, Yappy Hour, at the Satterfield Landing Dog Park, and that would be on Wednesday mornings, June 25th through August 26th. There is a budget ask there, but it would be minimal, just some little pools and trees and things like that, so. Moving forward, sponsorships are increasing. We have about a little over 5,000 in 2024. We anticipate that or more in 2025. And as our programs grow, so do the responsibilities, so we would love to have any volunteers from the community. Please reach out to us if you're interested. And as always, we're grateful for all the businesses, organizations, and individuals that make this happen. And final slide is just a big thank you to everyone, the Board of Commissioners, the Art and Culture Committee. We have Peggy Saporito in the audience today, who's on the committee as well. So thank you to them, to all the town staff, our volunteers, community partners. Also want to extend appreciation to the Police Department, Fire Department, Public Services. They're there. They make these events go off smoothly, and genuinely, everyone in the community loves to interact with our other departments. So also, thank you to the vendors, musicians, fitness instructors, and schools for their support, and most of all, to the community. So that's all I have for you today. Happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I apologize if Paige couldn't be there.
I have a couple of things before I turn it to the Commissioners. Speak just very briefly to our representation of the Todd Craft Waste Water Initiative at the markets. Are we just going to continue that this summer?
Absolutely. Our environmental planner, Connor Twitty, this past season, he attended the Farmer's Markets. We had a little town booth set up. He was available to talk to people about the Septic Health Initiative, and he actually picked up quite a few inspection requests from that, so we will absolutely continue to do that again this year. And we may even have Planner Chris Trimbley out there talking about our Dark Skies Initiative occasionally as well.
Very good. And one other thing, I appreciate the committee's effort to expand activities to our other parks, especially that Satterfield. That sounds nice. Is there any thought, we're getting ready to do some, we're preparing to undertake improvements at the Whalebone Park. Is there any thought being given to what might happen at Whalebone?
Absolutely. So when our Art and Culture Committee meets, we always kind of chime in on the process of Whalebone Park, where we're at, what's happening. So now that we have the pavilion and the restrooms coming up, we do anticipate having more discussions about what types of activities we could shift and have down there at Whalebone Park as well.
Cool.
Excited for that.
Mr. Sanders.
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to echo the thank yous that you gave to everyone, and I'm really excited to see how well we're using this space and everything that the town's doing. It's really exciting, and I just appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sears.
No, thanks to the committee and you for everything, and the positivity that that brings to the community is wonderful.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
No questions, just thank you, and I'm also very excited about Whalebone Park and to see stuff starting to happen with that.
Wonderful.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That brings us next to public comment, and I will turn that over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board of Commissioners welcomes members of the public to provide comment to the board. This is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the board rarely responds to comment, but anybody who wishes to comment has an opportunity to do so right now. Also, we have a public hearing on the budget, so if you're here to speak about that, you should reserve your comments until we get to that public hearing. But anyone else who wishes to address the board, this is your chance to do so. If you'll please go to the podium and start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your remarks to the board, and I will let you know when your five minutes is just about up.
Thank you. Good day. My name is Tiana Stathis, and I'm here representing the League of Women Voters of Dare County. We're here to present the 2025 Citizens' Guide, Your Guide to Community Services. Complimentary copies of the guide, published by the League since 1988, are distributed annually to government and businesses, business offices throughout Dare County. It contains contact information for local, state, and national governmental agencies, voting information, emergency numbers, and a great deal more. Our guide is published under the auspices of the State League of Women Voters Citizen Education Foundation. On the back cover, you'll find acknowledgement of the municipalities and local businesses that donated generously toward publication expenses. Thank you, and thanks to all staff members who helped update this information of this year's version. League members are now distributing 6,400 copies of the guide from Duck to Hatteras Village, Roanoke Island, and Mainland Dare. You'll find them in libraries, post offices, the bomb-infested centers, as well as town and county offices. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Publishing this guide is part of our continued commitment to provide pertinent information to voters. Membership in the League is voted, is open to anyone of voting age. We thank you for your support, and we'll, we know you'll find our guide useful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm done.
Right. Thank you very much.
Ms. Walters?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Susie Walters, and I live at 415 Raceview Court in Nagshead. At your last meeting, you were unable to come to consensus regarding an appointment to the Board of Commissioners to temporarily fill the seat vacated when Kevin Brinkley resigned. I was unable to attend the meeting but was able to watch via YouTube. It is disheartening that you can't come to a consensus to fill the seat with one of the 14 applicants. Two motions were made without qualifying the reason for nomination. Both failed on a 2-2 split. One motion was made with qualifications for the nomination. This motion also failed twice. Therefore, the most qualified applicant, who has led the Nagshead Planning Board as Chair for seven years, was not, was not selected. This person was recently nominated and elected unanimously as Chair of the Planning Board for the seventh time by her fellow Planning Board members. Her leadership skills and knowledge regarding town issues are outstanding. She leads the Planning Board to achieve consensus regarding issues before the Board, meets with staff regarding the agenda and supporting documentation, attends many of your meetings, and answers any questions you may have. Since no qualifying reasons were given for the other nominations, the perception is that sexism exists on this board. As a longtime citizen of Nagshead and former Commissioner, I find this disheartening. You have dragged this out longer than necessary. Your inability to make an informed decision regarding the best interest of the town is astonishing. I hope you will examine your motivations, reread all of the applications, and do what is best for our community. Nagshead Commissioners have a long history of rising to any opportunity or challenge to serve our community. I have faith that you will also. Thank you for your service. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Walters.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor, Town Manager. John Costulis, I live at 4201 13th Street in Nagshead. Let me give you a little bit of background about myself and my family. Deep roots from the early 1900s in Hyde County and Dare County. My Aunt Lena ran the Sea Ranch Hotel during the Big Band Era for 30 years. My father had a dream of building a family home in the Outer Banks, particularly in He worked as a teacher and educator for 30 years but could never afford to build a house for our family here in the Outer Banks. I was fortunate enough to learn from his hard works and his dedication to people and to his students that, to further our family, I had to get a better education. So luckily, after working for NASA for 35 years, retired as a Senior Executive Certified Employee, federal employee, working space technology, human resources, budget management, huge projects, management of huge projects, worked in DC on the Hill, I was able to do that for my family in 2019. During COVID, we built our house, and we've been here since. I was lucky to have lived in a town called Pecosa, Virginia. Don't even know if anybody knows Pecosa, Virginia, but think about it this way, a lot like Nagshead, Manio, and Yonchee combined. Very small town, very focused on making sure that the town, its people, and the people that come and visit are welcomed. So having served on the school board and school board chairman, I've noticed a few things about the town, and if you would allow me to provide some external view, the town here, I love how it operates and everything, but I think there's a couple of opportunities that should be considered. One, first and foremost, there's a lot of people that have a lot to offer the town, and you should consider how you structure your boards, especially if they're not elected to the boards. You ought to think about term limits, because there's people that can come in. In our town, Pecosa had two, three-year terms for all boards, because it allows an opportunity for people to come in and provide their input from various experiences and a diverse set of backgrounds. Secondly, I think you, as a board, have a great opportunity to help young people. We made a conscious effort for all of our boards and our councils to include high school students that want to look at maybe going into public administration, business management, whatever that might be. And I realize there are certain functions of a board and a commission or a town council that may not be appropriate for students to be a part of, but in the broader sense, you have an opportunity to do that. We saw a lot of our students go to very high, because on their resume, it looks fantastic, very high-performing universities, and have come back and given back to the community in public service, which is, I think, is extremely important. And lastly, I'd like to address the other thing, the other thing. You should give strong consideration to motives of the people that you bring onto your Board of Commissioners, making sure that they're a good representative of, first, the town employees, a good representative of the town constituents themselves, and to tourists. I know you're struggling with how you're potentially fulfilling an appointed position, but I will tell you, there's a lot of people that are frustrated. There are a lot of people that are worried. There are a lot of people that feel diminished and threatened. A lot of people that are feeling retaliation, and I'm here to speak a little bit about those folks, for those folks. I'd be, I want to be totally transparent in this process, and thank you for the five minutes that we have to speak.
And that is five minutes right there.
Okay, thank you. Just be very considerate of the people that you're bringing onto the board and what their motives are, and allow people, new people, to have an opportunity to serve on your boards. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costulis. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? If not, at this time, we will conclude the public comment session.
Thank you, Mr. Leidy. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda, which you have before you, and a motion would be in order.
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. That brings us to public hearings, and Mr. Leidy and Amy will handle this part.
All right. Well, at this time, then, we will begin the public hearing to consider a very, a proposed financing arrangement for the fiscal year 2020-25 for various projects. I guess the Ocean Rescue Housing and purchase of property at 4222 South Croatan Highway. And we'll begin with the presentation of the staff's overview of this matter by the Deputy Town Manager and Finance Officer, Amy Miller.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. So today, our public hearing is required by state statute. It's required as part of the LGC approval that we need for the financing of real property and real property improvements, and that is the Ocean Rescue Workforce Housing located at Health Center Drive. That is in our CIP and adopted budget for this fiscal year, as well as the purchase of 4222 South Croatan Highway. Both of these projects have reimbursement resolutions that were approved by the board. And so the financing that we're going to do is two different terms. For the vacant land at 4222, we're going to finance approximately $1.5 million for 10 years in arrears, with an interest rate not to exceed 4.32%. We bid out the financing terms. PNC was the winning bank. And then the other one, that is the Ocean Rescue Housing, that's not to exceed 5.48% for a nine-year financing in arrears. And we're actually working under contract with our bond attorneys, Parker Poe. Because we are receiving rent on that property, the bond attorneys for PNC was not comfortable signing off on that that would be non-taxable, so the 5.48% is non-taxable, the, sorry, the taxable rate, that's why it's more, because we're receiving rent. However, our bond attorneys are prepared to provide a letter to PNC that it would qualify as non-taxable, giving us the lower rate. But for the purposes right now, because we don't have that letter just yet, the not to exceed is 5.48%, knowing it will probably be less. And the amount that we need to pay our bond attorneys to provide that letter is very minimal compared to the 80-some thousand it will save us over the course of the financing. So they're pretty confident we could do that, so just know that that's kind of in the works. The LGC approval is April 1st, and so we're just trying to, you know, do everything in the proper order, and part of that is making sure we've met all the statutes for bidding and the public hearing, and I know John Leidy's firm is helping us with that letter of assurance for the LGC, so if you have any other questions, let me know, but thank you for your, for your help in getting the LGC approval.
Thank you.
And, oh, sorry, there is also a budget amendment to go with this, and the, because the land kind of came up this fiscal year, it wasn't really part of the, you know, we didn't know that was going to happen when we were prepared the budget. That just records all the activity, including the sale of the other property and the event site, so we're using the proceeds from the sale of those two properties to help, to put cash down, I guess, for this property, so that, that budget amendment is included as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions for Ms. Miller? I have one question. So you're asking the board to approve the budget amendment and two financing resolutions, is that right?
Well, one, yes, and I'm sorry, I didn't elaborate on that. One is the financing resolution that just basically says you're going to accept the terms of, you know, the bank and the interest rate, and again, that is a not-to-exceed amount because we don't have that letter yet from our bond attorney, so just know that it will probably be the 4.32% for both, but for the purposes of this, it's, we have to put that in there right now because we're still working on that. And then the findings resolution is required by the LGC also. It just basically states we're following statutes for issuing debt and why that we're doing these projects.
All right, thank you very much. Does any member of the public wish to comment on these proposed resolutions or the budget amendment? amendment? Anything further from staff on this?
Not that I can think of. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have any other questions or want any other information before you deliberate on these?
I just want to clarify the actions, but I can do that in the hearing or after.
That'd be fine.
So we're going to, we need three motions, I believe, is we approve the financing amendment and the findings resolution and the finance terms resolution?
Those are the three items that I would need approval for.
Okay, yes.
All right, at this time, let's conclude the public hearing and move on to the board's deliberations or actions on the, on the matter.
And the budget amendment?
Yeah.
Yes, the budget, yes.
So I make a motion to approve the financing terms for Ocean Rescue Construction and the purchase of 4222 South Croatan Highway.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the filing of an application for approval of financing agreement, Ocean Rescue Housing Purchase 4222 South Croatan Highway.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'll make the motion to approve the budget amendment request as seen.
Okay, all right. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amendment as well. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. The next item on our agenda, then, is reports and recommendations from the planning board and the planning and development director, Kelly. Now it's your normal time.
This is what I'm used to. Okay. All right, so not too, too much to report out on today. As always, just a list of the primary meetings that our department had through February. I did want to highlight the planning board's most recent meeting, which was February 18th. They did hear a text amendment from Attorney Kraus Gray Jr. on behalf of Nags Head 87 LLC to increase the number of fueling dispensers available at fueling stations from four to eight, as well as to increase the size of any convenience store associated with a fueling station within the C2 district. And the planning board recommended unanimously for denial of that text amendment as it was presented. We also had a text amendment from the Shields family to allow the use of bar and lounge as a permitted use in the C5 historic commercial character zoning district. And after speaking with them and their representative, they did want to pull that, continue to have a conversation with staff about what it is they desire to do on that property, and perhaps it does not rise to the level of a bar or lounge. So we're still working with them on that. So that came off the agenda. And then we did have a continued conversation about ADUs. And I think we are at a place where if the Board of Commissioners is inclined to do so, that we would be ready for a joint workshop with the planning board, planning staff, and the Board of Commissioners. So perhaps that is something that you can discuss later. The next meeting for the planning board is March 18th. We'll continue the conversation on ADUs. We had an item as part of our strategic plan to identify areas where there's incompatible uses. With the comp plan, there was an example given of the commercial outdoor recreation overlay district. So staff is just now in the process of looking at that, and we will have a report to the planning board, hopefully, at their next meeting. And then what I did not include in here is we just had our TRC meeting for a Starbucks, a restaurant, at the outlets, Nags Head, formerly Tanger Outlets. So that is likely to be on the planning board's next agenda as well, just as a site plan. It's not a special use or anything like that, so. And just to reiterate, they did remove the drive-through, so it is just a standalone restaurant. As far as other things that we're working on, the Septic Health Advisory Committee, we continue to work on getting our four new loggers installed. And I'm sure, as everybody has heard about, we were the recipients of NCD-EQ funding under the Decentralized Waste Water Treatment System Pilot Program. I think there's a lot of conversations to be had on that moving forward, but it is exciting that that was granted. Estorin Shoreline Management, geotechnical work is continuing with that. Sand relocation, we're up to about 118 authorizations and expending about 134,000 in doing management cost-share monies. Our deputy planning director, Joe Costello, will be giving an update on the hazard mitigation plan next, I believe. And then we just had our update for Doughty Park Arts and Culture. We just reiterate that we do have a winter market coming up on March 8th, this Saturday, nine to noon. Paige is out of town. I'm running this market, so I'm really hoping it goes smoothly. Just putting that out there. I'm happy to answer any questions, Amy.
Commissioner Lambert?
No questions.
Mr. Sears?
No questions.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to the market. I had to miss the last one, so I'm looking forward to Saturday very much.
It's been going really well.
Okay, good, good. Glad to hear it. Commissioner Sanders?
No questions, thank you. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kelly. And that is a freestanding Starbucks. It's not going in the shopping center somewhere.
Correct. It's in the, it will be in the parking lot, but I don't want to be in it.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. All right, Joe, with a resolution to adopt the Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. The purpose of the Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan was to identify, assess, and mitigate hazard risk to better protect people and property within Currituck and Derrick Counties against the effects of natural and human-caused hazards. The plan evaluates and prioritizes hazards using a priority risk index, basically ranking hazards as low, medium, or high risk, and then determining strategies to basically mitigate those risks. The development of a hazard mitigation plan is a requirement to any local government applying for federal mitigation grant funds. This plan ensures all jurisdictions on the Outer Banks remain eligible for federal disaster assistance, including hazard mitigation grant program funds, the Building Resilient and Infrastructure Communities Program Funds, which are called BRIC funds, and then flood mitigation assistance funds. The plan included a robust public outreach process. We had feedback from all local jurisdictions, had representatives, the local business community, property owners. There was also, I think, four public hearings or public meetings that discussed the plan. It was well advertised on radio, website, social media. So we ask that you consider adoption of the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Sanders?
No questions, no, thank you.
When did this initiative start? I mean, this was a while ago.
Yeah, I think the first meeting was around this time last year. I think it was April. I have them written down. Yeah, the kickoff meeting was April 2024, and then the most recent public meeting was January, where they did a final review.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Commissioner Sears? Commissioner Lambert?
No questions. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, all right, thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. All right, having seen this item and having heard Joe's presentation, a motion to adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, very good. That brings us to committee reports, and I will start with Commissioner Sanders.
Ms. Wyatt gave you an update on the Estorin Shoreline Committee, and just want to remind everybody about the big 50-year celebration at Jockeys Ridge. That is June 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. They got a lot of activities going on, a band, hopefully a drone show and a lot of other stuff. And you can get some more information there at the info@friendsofjockeysridge.org.
Great, thank you very much. The peer committee has not met again, but I will, this is not really a committee, but I will say, I do want to report on our trip to the legislature last week. Commissioner Lambert, Town Manager Garman, and I, along with our lobbyists, were able to visit our legislators last week and present a list of spending or allocation of funds and policy priorities to them. We were well received. Thanks to our consultants, the lobbyists, we were very well prepared for those meetings. Those discussions went very well, and that we are, we are very hopeful of getting their support in this coming session. Mr. Sears? Commissioner Lambert?
I'll be talking about the Government Education Access Channel in just a little bit for the budget. The Septic Health Committee has not met since our last meeting, but Kelly did give a brief update on the grant we received.
Yeah, all right, very good, thank you. That brings us next to consideration of an appointment to a board or committee. We do have a vacancy on the planning board that we passed on filling last month. And so I would ask, we have before us the list of those candidates who may be interested in serving, and so I will open this up for discussion and perhaps a nomination.
Mayor Kehren, I would like to nominate Basil Belches for the planning board. I've worked with Basil on the multifamily working group. I appreciate Basil's engagement with the rezoning on C5, and he's shown a willingness to serve. So because of that, I would like to nominate him for the planning board.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any further discussion about that? Okay, all right, very good.
I agree, we do have a lot of qualifying people, and I believe he's shown a lot of interest, so.
Yep, okay. Hearing no other nominees being placed into nomination then, and having Basil's nomination duly made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. And thank you. We'll be getting a letter to Basil as well to thank him for his willingness to serve. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town attorney, Mr. Leidy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was asked to discuss with the board some issues regarding the current sign ordinance that the town has, and I'd like to ask that we discuss that in closed session at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. I think there's been a little discussion, and I think now would, now would be the appropriate time, if the board is willing, to enter in the closed session. John, we do not have the appropriate language.
I'll be glad to give it to you.
Okay, thank you, please do.
The motion should be to enter closed session in order to confer with the town attorney regarding matters protected by the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege as allowed by General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great, the board will be in closed session. All right, the board has returned to open session. Mr. Leidy, do you have anything to report?
The board did not take any action while we were in closed session.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town manager. Andy?
I think David's going to go ahead and give the update on public services real quick.
Okay, thank you.
It's getting close.
I wrote about it the other day. It looks so great. It really does.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. And what I have for you is something a little bit different than what I've presented during the course of the project. It's just some project photos. As we get closer with some of the finishing elements, I just wanted to give the board a sense of the progress that we've made over the past month. So up here on the screen, there's been multiple activities that have occurred this past month. The picture that I have here is of South Lark Street, or South Lark Avenue, which was recently paved. We fit this into the project work. This was paved about three weeks ago, and in addition to South Lark Avenue, we also resurfaced South Pond Avenue. So we've got a new pavement surface in and around the project. In addition to that, we landscaped the west side of the project where the bulk of the facilities are located. Up on the screen, I've got the, the recent landscaping that was completed. You can see the sod that was put in around the live oaks fronting that property. You can see there was some cleanup that was done in this area right here in front of the combined fleet facilities and sanitation building, and really improving the aesthetics of that corridor. Here's a view looking southward along South Lark Avenue, just with the enhancements that were made, the general cleanup of the underbrush, and then also the installation of pine straw in and around the Lark Avenue corridor. In addition to that, there was some internal landscaping. You can see that because this is a, I guess, a highly functional part of the facility, is that we looked at trying to mirror some of the landscaping that was done on the administrative building to bring connectivity between the two, tying some of the plannings together as well as enhance it with landscaping stone to go ahead and have something that's low maintenance as well. So you can see here, we've got crepe myrtles, we've got some mulley grass, some maiden grass, some Hollywood junipers. Here's another view here of the fleet building. Again, just trying to enhance a lot of these landscape islands throughout. You can see we've got Hollywood junipers surrounding the fuel tank to go ahead and create a visual buffer from the street, you know, to those facilities. And another addition this month was the fuel canopy. You can see right here, this has gone up within the past week or so, as well as a lot of connecting elements underneath it and to the washdown building. So I've got a couple of views here up on the screen for you that highlight the different angles. And this is the washdown building, which is the center of the screen. That's where a lot of the components for the two washdown areas will be contained. And you can see, we've already started putting in some equipment this week. They energized the building. They'll be setting the gas meter later this week. And then it's just some finishing work with the addition of a compressor and some other minor utilities within the building in order to go ahead and get these facilities up and running. So we've made some good progress. In addition to this, there was some perimeter fencing that we recently completed with the project. We had about 50% of that perimeter fence replaced, and we were able to go ahead with the project funds to finish off the remaining balance of that perimeter fencing. So in total, it was close to about a mile's worth of fencing that we installed around the entire complex. So there's, there's been a lot of progress that has been made. I think within the upcoming month, there's a lot of cleanup left to be done on the site. Like I said, there is some utility connections in order to bring some of these final elements online, but we're getting very close. Glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Dave?
Yeah, the place looks, it looks amazing, and I was just wondering, it seems like...
Yeah, the place looks, it looks amazing. And I was just wondering, it seems like with all the improvements in the structures to keep the trucks and everything in, it looks like this facility is going to save the town a lot of money. Is that kind of correct, in the long run?
In the long run, yes. I think one of the goals and objectives of the project was to try to contain a lot of our equipment and vehicles inside the structure to go ahead and increase their longevity. And so we've been able to do that. And, you know, the staff up there have really taken to utilizing those facilities as much as they can to be able to house their equipment. And, yeah, they're just settling right in.
And to be able to do some of their own maintenance on the vehicles as well and stuff.
Yes. In addition to that, we've got a larger enhanced facility, so we've got more room for them to be able to do their work inside. So it just makes that that much more efficient and productive.
Looks great. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Sears?
Yeah, great job. Thank you, David.
Yep.
Great job. It looks awesome.
I just have to tell you this. I had a meeting as a consultant with one of our other local towns that will go unnamed. And they have looked at what we've done, and they like it very, very much. And they actually would like to copy some of it in contrast to what they've done in the past, so.
Good, I'm glad to hear.
It's good. They want to know who our architects were and who our contractors were, so I let them know that.
It will be interesting, you know, the washdown areas we have now are much more robust than we had before. And so there's two separate wash areas. There's the larger vehicle area, which the trucks can actually back down into. And then what David was showing is the washing equipment, and there's a wand system that they can use to keep the trucks clean. And then there's also a drive-through wash station, much similar to what we used to have for the smaller vehicles. And I know they're looking forward to getting this all up and running and back online. And then I know Ms. Miller is interested in having our fuel dispensers back online because I know next budget year, she's going to budget for reduced fuel costs that we save by having our own fuel as opposed to using our wax cards, so. All very exciting improvements, and, you know, everything's worked out pretty well overall for this. I mean, you know, we had some additional expenses. You know, we had some additional revenue because of the bond financing. We were able to use that to meet these additional needs. And, you know, I think once this project's buttoned up, we're going to pretty much have everything we want. One of the things that I know Facilities Maintenance wanted was a sign shop, and I know they talked to you about that early on. And Stevens getting a new plotter, a sign plotter, in order to make all of his own signs. It's a pretty sophisticated piece of equipment, but it's going to be really nice for them, so.
Very good.
Yes, and to piggyback onto what Andy was saying, is the two washdown areas will be under the canopy. And so we have one that the sanitation trucks will be able to pull up in, and I'm highlighting this area right here. And we'll have a pressure washer that they can use to go ahead and wash down those vehicles. In addition, there is a drive-through area, and you can see this arch right here, that will be a rinse arch. So whether it's sanitation vehicles or some of our fleet vehicles, they'll be able to go ahead and drive through, rinse off, and then they'll also have the secondary option of using the pressure washer through those drive-through facilities. So we talked to staff and tried to make this as efficient and effective as possible to include all of our fleet vehicles.
Okay, great.
It will be interesting to see, though, back to Commissioner Sanders' point about the longevity of our equipment, especially the sanitation vehicles, when we can wash them and store them inside.
Oh, yeah.
You know, they're about $400,000 apiece now, so, you know, we'll definitely be looking closely at our service life for those items. And when we can, when we can get more life out of something, we'll try to. You know, we don't want to get back to a system of deferring things, but we also want to get the most out of it because it's just becoming so expensive.
Yeah, I think that's going to make a huge difference, really. I mean, it's not, you know, we'll know about the sort of the day-to-day cost of operations, you know, because you have staff, and you have lights, and heat, and all that sort of thing. But that protection of that equipment is going to be really, I think, going to really pay the evidence for us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, David. Appreciate that.
All right, I think I've got the next item as well, which is an update for our beach nourishment project. Last month, our consultant, Moffett and Nickel, was here to go ahead and talk about the schedule for our next beach nourishment project, which is scheduled for either '26 or '27. We talked about bidding that out over multiple years. One of the design considerations is the very south end of the project. And up here on the screen, I've got a view of the project template that was utilized back in the 2019 project. And you can see here that there's a hatch line right here, which represents that fill above water. And then there's a, this other hatch, which goes in the other direction, that shows the tie-in for that beach berm. Right here, where this hand is, that's where the ocean outfall is. And so the taper has always stopped short of that ocean outfall, with that ocean outfall being a constraint. In the past, there's always been an unknown as to what that permitting process would be to extend that onto the National Park Service property. Recently, as we've been talking about the design, we had some outreach with the National Park Service personnel to get some specifics on a permitting process if we were to extend that taper onto their property. We had a meeting back on the 21st of February just to explore the specifics of the, of that permitting process. I think there were some notes that were included in your packet, which just talked about some of these items, most of them to talk about the duration of their process and the data and the information that would be included as part of a permitting process to get authorization to extend onto the property. And it was a very, it was a very good meeting because what we found out is that they would not treat this like a normal beach nourishment project. They would treat this as a smaller-scale project. And so the permitting requirements would be less more stringent. And this is something that could be obtained within about a six-to-eight week period. A lot of the information that we have for the other permitting agencies would apply to this. There was a couple nuanced items in their permit. We were able to go ahead and talk through those. And it seems like the process overall will be, will be pretty easy to go through. So our consultant, Moffett and Nickel, looked at a draft or a concept of extending that taper onto the Park Service property, and I think this is the preferred alternative. And essentially, what this does is it gives a dual benefit. The shortened taper length and that geometry doesn't always provide very significant stability. By going ahead and lengthening this taper, it provides more stability and more in line with Mother Nature and how that would naturally form. So in addition to that benefit, it would also give a greater fill density to some of these properties on the south end of the project, these last half-a-dozen houses, that they would receive a greater fill density than they had received in the past. And it also permits this, the engineered dune to be extended further southward, again, trying to provide a larger and greater benefit to these properties and meet the objective of being able to have that level of protection. And so what we would be asking to you today is some guidance on how to proceed forward with this design is, and I'll give you a little bit more information, is that this would result in about 14,000 cubic yards of additional material to be able to extend on the property. And the estimated value of that is about $170,000 to be able to accomplish this. And so understanding that there could be a benefit to maybe retaining this sand in place a little bit longer on the south end, and also giving benefit to these last half-dozen property owners, just wanted to get some board feedback as how you would like to proceed as the consultant is in the process of moving forward with those permit drawings. And we would like to include this in the permit drawings that they are looking to submit by the end of this month.
Talk a little bit more, David, about the, you know, what this does for the longevity and the benefit to those homeowners. Because I think the cost, you said $170,000 worth of sand, is sort of a drop in the proverbial bucket. So what, but what are we getting for that in terms of what happens here at the, at the end of this?
So essentially, what we're getting is we're getting more stability on that south end. Because we are lengthening the, this taper length right here onto the property, that that could essentially hold this sand that is up coast of this in place longer. And that has historically been an issue with the south end of that project. And recent projects, from what we've seen, they have filled in somewhat down here, you know, at the very south end of the project. But there's a potential with the longer transition that is more natural and provides greater stability to hopefully go ahead and reduce the potential for erosion in that area.
So we, we know it will benefit us, and I think to a great degree, that's intuitive. You know, you extend that taper and more sand, it's, but it's hard to quantify. It's hard to say, well, you know, because we never know what the weather conditions are going to be or what kind of storm we might get or what might happen. So we can't really say, well, this, this gives us another, you know, two years before we run into the problem in South Nags Head that we always have in South Nags Head. Or, you know, and we just really can't quite quantify.
It is difficult to quantify without going through some extensive modeling. But from the principles and practices of beach nourishment design, the longer taper length and geometry is the preferred design.
Okay, alternative.
The project's designed, you know, to handle the erosion for a certain period of time, you know, and, you know, everybody in the beach nourishment areas charged an MSD tax rate. And we've had, we've had owners in the past in some of these taper areas sort of feel short-changed. And so we're paying attention to that, and we want to make sure that, to the extent we can, guarantee them the maximum profile to handle the erosion in front of their property. And this probably does that a little bit better. And so that would be our argument for doing it. And we were very pleased with the Park Service's new process for being able to issue these permits under their settlement management plan, so it's very good.
Good. Any questions for David? Commissioner Lambert?
David, I may have missed it, but this is going to go past that outfall, so the outfall will get extended?
No, so there's an arrow up here on the screen that shows the end of the outfall. This dash line represents the top of the fill or the fill berm for the beach nourishment project. And this other blue line would show the toe of fill, so there would not be encroachment into that outfall. Part of the discussions would be to go ahead and get authorization from DOT to permit this. But it would be incorporated into the construction documents that the contractor would be responsible for making sure that that outfall was free and clear during the course of construction. And post-construction, the town would just be responsible for going ahead and monitoring that outfall to ensure that it's open and flowing. But that was one of the discussions that we had with the consultant, is the concern over keeping that outfall open without there being encroaching sand towards the end of that outlet.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
No questions, no.
Okay, all right. Thank you, David. Do we have an action item?
There was not an action item. Just if this is how you would like to proceed, just give me the thumbs up, and we'll proceed in that manner.
Okay. Think we're getting that, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
That brings us to our Board of Commissioners' agenda, and I will start with Commissioner Lambert because I know that you, we know that you have an item.
Hopefully, everyone's had time to look. It's the budget request, the annual budget request for the Government Education Access Channel Committee. Hopefully, everyone's had time to look at it. Our annual membership fee is still $1,000, as it was last year. And I think that we get quite a good return for that each year. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. If not, I would like to make a motion to approve the budget as submitted.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? To thank you for serving there and thank them for their, their good work. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Continuing the Board of Commissioners' agenda, Commissioner Sears? Mr.?
Nothing at all, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. I lost Andy. That brings us to the, to the Mayor's agenda, the first item there being a consideration of resolution of support for updating the 2016 Beach and Inlet Management Plan. That's why I asked David if there was an action item, but it's actually under, under my part of the agenda. And you have that in your packet. This is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Nags Head supporting the update of the 2016 Beach and Inlet Management Plan. And if there are no questions about that, then a motion would be in order.
Second?
I have a motion. And second, to approve that or adopt that resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda, this is, this is, I think, one of the board's annual favorites. It is certainly one of my favorite days of the, of the year when we get to present the Nags Header and the White Keeper Awards for the Town of Nags Head. We've gotten to bring into the room some great folks and to honor them and families of those who are deceased, and to be able to honor their, their family members for their contributions to the Town of Nags Head. We have a very distinguished list of prior recipients of these awards. And so that application period is now open. The clerk has the, has the forms. Are they posted on the website? They are available. So the form, the nomination forms are available on the town website. And, and the application deadline is, I just saw, you just told me this, April 15?
Yes.
Is April 15, tax day. So you can make a nomination and turn your taxes in at the same time. Or file, no, there won't be any extension of the application process, so good luck with your taxes. And so I invite those, and I hope that we get as robust a response as we have the last couple of years. That brings us to consideration of appointment to the Nags Head Board of Commissioners, a topic which was spoken of at our, at our public comment. You will recall that the board did have a round of nominations and voting at our last meeting. And the board, this board has done a really good job of being on the same page about things and doing good things for the town. And we are on the same page to the extent that we want the best candidate possible to fill this seat for the remainder of what had been Commissioner Brinkley's term. But we are continuing to try to find a consensus. And so I would ask the, the board members if they're... And so, I would ask the, the Board members if there is any new thinking about nominations, or about who we might choose to fill. And in the absence of that, I have a suggestion. Hearing none, my suggestion is that, in the absence of, of further nominations today, that the Board essentially take a step back from this formal process that we've been in since we received the applications in December, and that we continue to have dialogue and continue to consider our options, and that at any meeting in the future, believing there is support for a candidate, any Commissioner may make a nomination for a candidate, and we will vote on them at that time. That would be my recommendation to you. We adopted a process for nominating and voting at our last meeting, I believe. John, does that need to be modified in any way, or can we simply, can we, can we proceed without voting on this? In other words, based on this recommendation?
I think you can, yes, sir. You can just proceed that way.
Okay. Very good. Well, hearing no objection from the Board, that is what we will do. Thank you. We have had our closed session. Is there other business to come before the Board? All right, hearing none, then we will recess to our Fiscal Year 25-26 Budget Workshop. And Roberta wants me to bang the gavel, so that people know that we are entering the next phase of this meeting. Actually, I have to call that to order, I think that's when she wants me to bang the Are we ready to proceed directly to the workshop? All right, I think we can let staff go. Not, not let you go, in the greater sense, we can let you leave today.
I'm stubborn. It's good to hear.
Nice word. You probably would not use that word.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I need a motion to recess. I can't just do that.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to recess. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? All right, thank you. Board has recessed to our workshop, and I am grateful to our new clerk for being on the ball this morning. Good job. Yes. Outstanding. All right.
Well, Amy's, I think, going to bring up her computer, she's going to take a quick restroom break first.
Okay, all right.
I'll just, while she's in the restroom, I'll introduce the workshop.
Okay.
But, so, yes, we, we've had a workshop at this time each year, in the past few years. See you, John.
See you, John, thank you.
So, I mean, we've sort of called this our pre-budget workshop. We're not presenting the budget to you, we're not presenting the CIP to you, but we're really just trying to give you information before we get into the actual budget. So, what we've got today is a series of, of short presentations to kind of go over the big items that we'll be dealing with this year for the budget. And so, I laid those out for you in an agenda, and Amy's going to go ahead and kick this off with a discussion about how our revenues are tracking. Obviously, everybody's aware that our occupancy tax was a bit down the current year. We're tracking it to be probably about four hundred thousand dollars under what we budgeted. And we're going to have to consider that next year when we prepare our budget, and determine how we're going to make up that shortfall. In addition to that, we're going to also be dealing with the revaluation this year the county has completed, and we're going to have to adopt a revenue-neutral tax rate, or something close to that. And so, Amy's going to go over what that process looks like. Health insurance has become a big item this year, and Jan is going to come over and talk a little bit about that. And that's going to be a big consideration, as we've recently found out. And then finally, we're going to just do a little discussion on beach nourishment in terms of, everybody knows that we're going to be putting our project out to bid this fall, and that, what that means for financing, as well as consideration of any tax rate adjustments to fund that new project, and, and the timing for that. So, those are the four items we wanted to really talk about today, and it'll be fairly casual, open discussion, but when Amy's ready, she can go ahead and start reviewing things.
Yes.
Okay. I just put it up.
Okay, perfect. I think that's mine, too.
That was yours?
I mean, I can bring it up if you want.
Okay. Get my notes. Okay. Hello again. Okay. So, it seems like Andy kind of talked about the agenda with y'all, and this is a very brief, informal discussion, so feel free to, you know, ask questions and having, you know, any interaction that you need. So, first, I wanted to give an update about our shared revenues. And we're not, unfortunately, hitting our target, and that would be for sales, land transfer, and occupancy tax. Specifically, occupancy tax is really down. So, right now, we've only received through December, so we still have half of the year to go, so things might, might change, but right now, we're in about a five hundred thousand shortfall for these. And don't worry, we'll, we'll figure it out. But one of the reasons is, is that, you know, we, because the shared revenue percentage that we get is a year behind our tax, any tax increase, when we had done our tax increase, we didn't realize that KDH also had done a tax increase. So, I think theirs was like three and a half cents, or something like that, when we did the four cents. So, that kind of negated any, any additional percentage that we would have gained. So, we didn't really anticipate that, because we didn't know when our budget was presented that they did that increase as well. So, that's one of the reasons. So, what, what are we going to do about it? Oh, wait a second. Okay, so, what are we going to do about it? I have a, I talked to Andy about a couple ways that we can kind of make up for that. And the first one is, is for, for interest income, for the GAZB, we actually have to record our investments that we have, anything that matures within, over a year from the end of the fiscal year, you have to record them at fair market value, meaning like you have to present that, that you sold them. And so, this year, we will have a fair market value gain. And that can negate that, and I don't usually budget for the fair market value, because you, you want it to be, you know, you don't want to have highs and lows from year to year, but unfortunately, you just, you do, that's the way the market goes. So, I think that, and that does hit your financials as if you sold them. So, it is a real realization, it's, it's not just on paper, it is actually reported as, you know, losing income or gaining income just from the fair market value. So, that is something real that we record, so that could be something our budget for. Our utility sales is, is over, so that could help wash that out. Some other suggestions I have is, when you appropriate fund balance, that shaves right off the top of your, your fund balance for this fiscal year. So, any appropriated fund balance for '26, that automatically comes off of the top of our fund balance for this fiscal year. So, that would be if you change it. So, it's four hundred thousand dollars this fiscal year that we appropriated fund balance in '25. So, if we reduce that fund balance for balancing the budget next fiscal year, then that would add to this year's fund balance, if that makes sense. So, my suggestion would be, I know that's a penny, so I know that's hard to find, and we've been fortunate enough that we've been able to absorb that, but this year, given the situation, you know, when I work with Andy, I'll see if we're able to appropriate less than four hundred thousand, because that would add back to our fund balance. And again, this is only six months, so try not to, you know, just kind of see if things wash themselves out. And then, one other consideration is, you all are aware of our capital investment fund, and any, any time that we exceed a thirty-five percent fund balance in our general fund for, after our audit's done, that money goes into our CIF, our capital investment fund. Well, the past two years, we've contributed to the CIF, meaning that we've been over that thirty-five percent. So, as we stand right now, as of last fiscal year, we're at our fund balance max. So, there is a cushion, if you're comfortable using fund balance, whether it means, you know, appropriating it, or just to, to fill that gap. So, I'm still, even with that being said, I'm still comfortable that we'll be within that fund balance range, just because we have, we are at the max the past two years, so that's also a consideration. And for next, for next fiscal year, you know, we'll probably budget at least five hundred thousand less for these shared revenues, because, well, A, we're down by five hundred thousand, and B, Duck raised their taxes three cents this fiscal year. And as far as we know, they were the only town that raised their taxes this fiscal year, so that means our percentage will decrease as well, because of Duck's increase of their taxes. So, those are some considerations. And I think I skipped a slide. So, how do I go back? Let me, hold on, let me get back to this slide. Sorry about that. Here we go. And just to put a few things in perspective, you know, right now, one penny is three hundred thirteen dollars, and I'll, I'll let you know about the revow later.
Thirteen thousand?
Sorry, three hun, one penny this fiscal year is three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, right?
She thinks a thousand.
Sorry. I don't know what I said, but just read this slide. So, you know, obviously, that will change this fiscal year, but some of the things that we're kind of battling against is, I know you all talked about, you know, the replacements, but one penny is less than the cost of a sanitation truck. You know, one penny is less than, you know, what our neighbors are doing for a cola, which is three percent. One penny, you know, if we have a twenty percent health insurance increase, which Jan's going to talk about later, that's less than that. And even now, like with, this is a great example of, you know, we've had a dump truck in our CIP the past couple of years. One day, Stephen got a call, and all of a sudden, it went from two hundred twenty thousand to three hundred fifty-six thousand. So, all of these things, you know, were kind of that tug and pull of, of competing with everything. So, it, that kind of shows you like what penny, how far one penny can go, and it can't even buy you a trash truck nowadays. So, and, you know, Commissioner Sanders asked about, I guess, the ROI with our trucks and things like that, and if we do have to look at deferring things, I think it's more in a response to being responsible and not paying, you know, for overpriced reaction, you know, not pay, overpaying for, in a reactionary economy right now. I know there was talks of, you know, the tariffs on the steel and the aluminum, and I think that's when they got that call, that that went up. So, I don't think that we want to change the philosophy of deferring things, it's just, is it responsible to do that right now, when we know things are overpriced? So, that's kind of our thinking on that. And I already talked about that. And so, now, unless you have any questions, I'll keep going to the revow. Like I said, we should get through this very quickly. I believe the revow figures were presented this week to Dare County, so we do have some preliminary figures for that. This is the fifth year, or last, this is year five, last time we did a revow was in 2020. The county, from what I'm understanding, is trying to stay on a more consistent five-year cycle. Last time, it was an eight-year cycle. So, what they have presented to us is that our property values are going up by seventy-one percent, which is a little bit lower than the county-wide average, and the way they come up with the, the valuations is based, it's based on market value. They did use like a, a tool to kind of automate it a bit, but it is based on the market value. And so, that will, we will have to publish a revenue-neutral rate, and if anybody complains that their taxes go up, the revenue-neutral rate is revenue-neutral to the town, it is not revenue-neutral to the taxpayer. So, when we say the property values, the average in Nags Head was seventy-one percent, that's average of the whole town. So, the oceanfront might go, the oceanfront might go up higher, the west side might go lower, and so, the oceanfront might end up paying more, the west side might paying less. Those are just examples, I'm not sure, because we haven't seen it broken down by area, but the revenue-neutral is revenue-neutral to the town, not the taxpayer. And what, the revenue-neutral rate is what the new penny will be to generate the same amount that we're generating right now with our levy. And there is obviously an appeals process. I know that the, the new valuations have not, or the new appraisals have not been sent out to the homeowners yet. So, the appeals process will take place, you know, beyond when we're, after we've presented our budget, so we won't know what, you know, they will negotiate down, essentially. And the last time, we used five percent as an appeals, to reduce that valuation by five percent, and that was agreed, that was advised by the county and agreed on by all the towns in the county. So, everybody used five percent as, to kind of reduce that for the appeals. I'm not sure what that will be this year yet, I don't know if we'll use five percent, so that's one of the questions we have for the county, is what would we need to use? And finally, the revenue-neutral rate is actually a little bit higher, because there is a growth rate built in. And so, the way that you get to the revaluation is, is pretty simple, it's, you know, you take your current valuation as it is today, you times that by your tax rate, and that's your levy. And so, to get the valuation, you figure out what one penny is on that, that new valuation, and then you divide that by your current, what you, your current levy is, and that's your new penny. And the punchline is, it's about twenty-one cents. And, you know, we haven't, one thing I haven't calculated yet is a growth rate. There is a built-in growth rate, last time, it was point eight-nine percent, and the growth rate is, what, how has your valuations grown since the last revow? So, you tack on a small growth rate to the revenue-neutral rate, last time, it added about seventy thousand dollars, this time, using that same growth rate, it'll add about ninety to a hundred thousand. I haven't calculated the growth rate, I just kind of did the basic math back of the napkin on the revenue-neutral rate. So, I'm not sure if you had any questions about that? Keep going. I think now it's Jan's turn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to provide an update about our health insurance, because we're looking at a pretty significant change this year. But before we get to that, just, just a little bit of background information. So, I know you're all familiar with the North Carolina League of Municipalities, they have provided our health insurance for at least the last ten years, I think it's far before that, to be honest. And they do that through, it's a, it's called Health Benefit Trust. So, that's where four hundred municipalities in North Carolina pool together their health insurance. When you participate in a pool, you just get more buying power, you have a little more leverage when you're negotiating rates, and you also like divvy out the risk if you have like bad claims. So... Um, when you participate in a pool, you just get more buying power. You have a little more leverage when you're negotiating rates. Um, and you also, uh, like divvy out the risk if you have like bad claims. So, um, last year, uh, we were used, well, North Carolina League of Municipalities has been using MedCost as their third-party administrator. So that would be considered like our healthcare carrier. Uh, and we've been using MedCost for at least the last ten years as well. Uh, MedCost is a regional carrier. They were experiencing some issues. We certainly felt it, our town employees felt it in terms of claims processing. They were backlogged on their claims sometimes as, as much as six months. And so the league made a good decision in, um, deciding to change carriers. And they switched to Aetna last year, which is a nationwide carrier. Depending upon the year, they're in the top like three to five largest. Um, CVS Caremark owns them, so they have really competitive pharmacy, um, rates. And so, um, I think it was a good call considering the experience we are having with MedCost at the time. Um, but even with that said, a carrier change can cause some disruption because, uh, you're looking at a different network, you're looking at a different formulary for, for pharmacies. So it does have an change impact from a staff perspective. Our renewal came in great. It was only at three percent last year. But the carrier change for us, it did trigger a desire to go to the market and look at other options. And so we worked with our broker, Mark Three, and he presented a variety of different options from other very large carriers. And the renewals ranged from eleven to twenty percent. And so that kind of solidified our way forward with NCLM, um, and Aetna because the, the price was good. We were trying to be good stewards of our funds. Um, and Aetna is a, is a, is a pretty solid carrier. Um, so we decided to stay with NCLM at that time. Well, fast forward to last week. Um, they informed us, along with everybody that participates in Health Benefits Trust, that they are no longer offering health insurance effective seven-one, which is a very big change for them. They've been doing this, I think they've been offering it since like the eighties, health insurance. So, um, that has caused, uh, you know, some scrambling. Um, luckily for us, we have a broker. So we're not scrambling to find a broker at this point. We have a very, um, like, very wow, highly regarded broker that operates in North Carolina and other, um, southeastern states. And so he is currently right now shopping for other plans for us. Um, he has been very transparent in what we should expect from a renewal perspective. So our renewal, you know, based on his evaluation of our claims, could be as high as twenty to thirty percent this year. The reason for that is, uh, any organization has ups and flows in how their, in, in, uh, medical claims. It was a higher claim year for Nags Head. But what compounded this issue is because of the backlog with MedCost, they had a runout period through December of last year. So we were still, uh, I should say, the trust was still, uh, still processing these claims that should have been processed the prior fiscal year. So for example, when we looked at our claims for July, August, September, October, they were like double, more than double than what they were the year pri- previous. And that's because of processing this backlog of claims right now. So where we're at right now is, um, like I said, Mark Three is currently shopping other, uh, other plans for us. Um, I feel fully confident he's gonna present the best options for us to consider. I hope in April, we'll be able to come with some options for you to look at. Did I want to talk about the numbers? Yeah, just to give you an idea on what a twenty percent... Okay, so a twenty percent increase in health, um, that would be about three hundred thousand dollars for us. So it's pretty significant, um, for the town. Did you, is there anything else?
Well, I think that one of the things that we're doing is, you know, there's been a big focus on employee benefits in the past few years. And the board just recently modified the contribution that employees make for the health insurance to reduce that. And that was, uh, seen as very positive, I mean overwhelmingly positive by the employees. And so we really don't want to, uh, start going back in the other direction. So the broker's using our current plan as a baseline for shopping new plans. You know, obviously, anytime you got, you have a big increase, the question could come up, well, do we want to start sort of changing coverages and things like that to, you know, reduce the overall cost? But we're, we're using as a starting point, our current plan as the baseline, trying to preserve that benefit level that we have now. And, and so that's, when we bring back options for you, that's where, where we're gonna start. So...
That's right.
Yeah.
There, there may be one of the options, um, where they look at joining another pool. There's several other pools that exist out there. Um, but most of the options will probably be quotes directly from vendors like Blue Cross Blue Shield. But there might be one of the quotes that looks at joining a, another pool and seeing whether that, that's worth considering. So, and we think that they'll probably look at two years' worth of claims when they give us our quotes, which should help a little bit.
Yeah, the fiscal year twenty-three claims weren't nearly as high as this year. That's why we had a lower renewal. We had a three percent renewal, which is super competitive because the average could be anywhere from like seven to nine percent. So we had a great renewal. And years prior, I think the first year I was here was, we didn't have any increase, it was zero percent, which is also pretty unheard of. So one of the things NCLM may have been doing is focusing on retention to keep some of their larger clients. Um, and perhaps, you know, some of those renewals should have been higher. But we've been, um, fortunate, you know, the last several years, we haven't had, you know, any type of significant increase.
So in order to catch up, they, they probably realized that the renewals they would have to give people were high enough that they would all go to market. And they'd lose a lot of business. And it, there was just no, no way out of the hole. So, um, it's unfortunate. We were shocked.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's disappointing and it's frustrating. Um, and, and, um, it's going to be a little bit financially difficult. I mean, we are, you know, Nags Head is a lot more fortunate than a lot of other small communities uh, that may have relied on the system for their, for their healthcare because we, we will be able to find the resources. I, I don't, I'm not gonna, we haven't talked about this. So I'm not saying I'm speaking for the board when I say this. But I, I think the approach is right, given the, the care that we've tried to give our employees the last few years, that, you know, we, we would not, I think our first approach would not be to try to save money by cutting, you, you know, by changing the benefit picture. Um, we, we, we want to continue to take care of those folks in the best way possible and find the money from somewhere else. Um, you know, um, I, I think that's, I saw a little bit of head shaking. So I think that's probably, you know, generally, I, I think affirmation of the approach I've started to take in looking at this. And I wish you luck. I mean, it's, you, you know, it's, it's a tough situation. I mean, I'm ready to retire, I own my own business. The only reason I'm working is for my health insurance. Honestly.
Yeah, and we are using, like Andy mentioned, that we offer three plans. And we're using that as a baseline as they shop for the other plans.
Right, okay, right, very good. Commissioners, any other questions or observations?
No questions, but thank you for your work on this.
Now on that.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
All right, great, thank you.
Before we go on to the beach nourishment discussion, I guess the point of all of this, you know, when, when Amy talked about the revenues, you know, we talked about the health insurance, the revow, and then the current climate we're in, um, with, uh, we're seeing some equipment rise in costs. And the market is, is certainly volatile right now. There's, there's some uncertainty. And we've been very aggressive in a lot of our, uh, project work and also with our vehicle replacements, equipment replacements. And we've gotten everything to a point where we're on a pretty good schedule. Like, you know, I was talking to the police department in Perry. And, um, you know, I think this coming year, we, we've got the last of the old vehicles cycling out where, where everything's really on a four or five-year schedule. And, and we don't plan to defer those items. You know, with all of our trash vehicles, you know, when we started out five or six years ago, I mean, we were running trucks that had fifteen-year-plus service life. And I think we've gotten all those down to five or six years now. So we're doing well. Um, so, you know, between the suggestions that Amy had for looking at how we, uh, balance the budget wi- with our investments or with utility sales tax or with the revenue, um, and also maybe looking at some, you know, sharpening of the pencil with some of the cuts. And, you know, maybe, maybe also looking at some of the project work. We've got a lot of projects going on right now that are getting underway. We've got two major drainage projects in South Nags Head. We've got Willburn Park currently underway, construction. The multi-use path on the beach road, we've got a fairly big project starting now. And then it'll continue over into the fall, which should get us from Jeanette's Pier all the way up to Curly Street. Um, we've got the Ocean Rescue Housing under, underway now. We've got a, a streets project, which includes water lines and drainage up on Memorial that goes from about Benner Street to Eighth Street. And then we're finishing up the public services project. And we, we've also so- talked about the fitness facility. All of that is a lot. You know, some of that will carry over into the fall. And then, um, you know, we, we've also, uh, looked at appropriations requests. And one of the big things would be of the request to replace our AC water lines. And, um, if we're successful with getting some of that funding, that in and of itself will probably change our CIP in its entirety. And so, um, with that said, you know, we might look at, um, next year being a lighter year for some of the project work, which could help us. And I, I think what we really want to do is, um, given that, um, we raised taxes pretty significantly for the public services complex, we, we don't really want to do that right now. And so we're gonna try to, to come up with a, a lot of different avenues to keep sort of the status quo with respect to the taxpayer. But, but still get a lot done and, um, be judicious with what we spend. So, you know, happy to hear any feedback from the board on that. But right now, that's sort of what we're thinking. And, and, uh, we're just trying to give you a, a better sense of what to expect coming up in April when we have our next workshop.
Yeah. Andy and I have talked about this a little bit. I don't, I don't know that anybody's, I mean, we want to keep projects going. Um, but, you know, this reevaluation's gonna be a bit of a shock to the sys- every, every taxpayer. Um, sort of no matter what, we're able to do with rates. Um, somebody made the point to me this morning, you know, that the effect on tax rates is one thing, but the effects on insurance and flood insurance and everything else is, uh, they're, they're not revenue neutral on, on, on those things. And so people, people are going to have some expenses, uh, to consider. And, um, I think to the extent that we can, um, be really judicious and conservative with our efforts in the, in this budget, I think probably will serve us and our residents really well. And, um, and I think we've, we've been so ambitious with projects that, um, if we, if we have to, you, you know, sort of go from a hundred and ten percent to ninety percent, I don't think that's really gonna, gonna give anybody too much heartburn. So...
So, yeah, we will be trying to fit all these puzzle pieces together over the next thirty days. And then I know we've got another budget workshop scheduled at the conclusion of our April meeting. So, um, that's when we'll have more information. And we'll probably have a, a draft CIP list for you at that point as well. We can talk about that.
Okay, that would be great.
And make some recommendations with that. And then I think, um, we did want to talk about beach nourishment briefly, just to give you an update on what we think about our financing for that.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you, Jan. Um, all right, well, real quick, um, I know, you know, with all the, we adopted the, the master plan and things like that. So we've been talking about twenty-six, twenty-seven, where we're gonna do new projects. So we felt like we needed to kind of pull in our financial advisors to get ahead of that a little bit. So we had, Andy and I had a meeting with them. And, um, basically, they said, don't do anything. You know, just don't lower the rates, but it's not really prudent to increase them either. And that's for a couple of reasons, because we actually don't know when we're gonna do the project. We don't know how much Dare County is gonna give us. We don't know the, um, debt supplement that they're giving us. There's too many unknowns right now to raise a rate. It would kind of be, we, we wouldn't know what we're actually trying, how much money we actually needed. So it's not the most responsible thing. But, um, even if we did end up doing a project in fiscal year twenty-six, it could potentially be in May, which would be the next fiscal year. We could certainly structure the financing so, um, you know, our debt payment wouldn't be due until the next fiscal year. We have enough cash that, you know, that would definitely reduce what we need to borrow. So we've been, you know, this is the whole reason why we're, a, a great advocate for why the rates kind of need to stay the same. It's to help you get for the next project. So, um, and did want to bring up that the revenue neutral rate is calculated in the MSDs as well. And that is also, you know, the, the beach nourishment, the townwide beach nourishment is part of that twenty-one cents that I had indicated. So within that twenty-one cents or whatever it ends up being, um, we will have a different breakout between the regular townwide and the beach nur- townwide and, as well as the MSDs. And I know the one MSD is like half a cent, so that might be significantly lower. So, um, we'll be presenting you revenue neutral rates on the MSDs. I have not calculated that yet, I apologize. And let's see, I know, um, I guess Andy said it was okay. I know David's not here, but I guess the preliminary numbers that we have recently got were about thirty-eight million for our next project. And, you know, I know that we're not going out to bid until the fall. I think like October, September. Um, and from what I understand, we're looking at, when I talked to David yesterday, we were gonna look at like two-point-three million cubic yards and some adults like we did for the last time. And that would probably also include what year that we would do the project because we did that last time and we saw significant, significant savings when we were able to hold it back a year. And, um, sometime, the last time at least with Dare County, when we ask them for the money, might depend on how much money they give us. Um, the, the longer we wait perhaps, um, the more they might be able to give us. But anyway, that's kind of what's going on with the beach nourishment. So they advise us just to kind of keep doing what we're doing. And, um, if the board would be okay with that, that's probably what will show up in the recommended budget.
Are, are conversations with the county about what their contribution might be? Are those pretty much continuous, ongoing conversations or?
Well, the, 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 the last time that, you know, we, we kind of keep giving them updated, like, you know, our prices are increasing and what are you gonna give us? And it's kind of just been, it's gonna be, that hasn't changed. What they have said that they've been giving us has not changed the past several years. And I'm not sure if it's because of the county projects that are going on or, you know, more people have, you know, southern shores. Like more people are trying to get a piece of that pie now. So that amount that, uh, they have given us has not changed, which I think originally it was half of like twenty-five million, so it was twelve-point-five million. That was the last I've heard. And again, that's kind of been the last couple of years. I don't know if that's changed. They, um, they know our situation. They know when we're thinking about doing it. They know our updated costs. So I, I don't know if they're waiting to find out when we're gonna do the project. Um, but I have not gotten anything, uh, even like what the debt service supplement might be. The past couple, um, projects we did, they gave us a supplement, so much money per year to help pay for our debt. So I have not heard anything, but we have been feeding them information.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we may end up needing some help with that.
Sure.
You know, so at some point in time, we want, may want to meet with the county manager and maybe one of the commissioners, you know, or Bob, what are, about this. You know, because I think the, the initial thought, and they may have a different recollection than, than I do, but was that they would pay for roughly fifty percent of our project. And as Amy mentioned, you know, that discussion was when it was a twenty-five million dollar project. But the projects are gonna go up over time.
Sure.
And there needs to be some, something built into their model that, that recognizes that. And that if they're just gonna hold this, this number as a fixed date and time, then either they, they need, there needs to be a discussion about how we generate more revenue overall to fund these projects, or they can, they can figure out how to give us a little bit more money.
Right.
But, um, that, that is a conversation that we'll need to have sometime soon.
Right. Well, we do need to have that. I mean, uh, the, the town has been prudent in establishing the new MSDs if we ever need them. And, uh, but, but they have pledged to support, regardless of what they did elsewhere in the county, they have pledged to support the projects that they contributed to build. Uh, there's, you know, essentially saying there was no point in having built them to sort of let them, let them go. I think that that has to mean, you know, that, that doesn't mean that, uh, you, you know, it's token support. I think that that means that it's a realistic, significant contribution like those that were made when the projects were built. And, um, I think that's... And, um, I think that's, I don't think that's an unreasonable expectation for the, for the partner towns to have. And I think that that's where we would start, um, certainly is that, at least proportionally, they, they should, uh, continue to sort of toe the same line.
So, you know, I guess the earliest way we'd be having a conversation about our MSDs would be for the FY twenty-seven budget, you know. Um, I think, just based on the information we've gotten from our consultant about our, our survey, you know, we were concerned last summer, uh, that we were having some losses in the southern part of town. But what they're showing us is that it was not as bad as we thought. And we have seen some recovery. And our, our, our preference would really be to go to twenty-seven, the summer of twenty-seven, just because we think the bids are ultimately going to be better for twenty-seven. And so then if that's the case, we, we could wait until FY twenty-eight budget likely to consider the MSD rates if, if that's the direction we go. But we'll know more in the fall and then, um, we'll have enough time to plan and determine what the conversation's going to be.
Well, I mean, I was glad to hear the number I heard. I, I, I have been carrying around for a while the number forty-two million in my head, probably just because it's easy to divide by seven.
That was the la- the cost of the last project that we actually did. And, yeah.
Yeah, so if it comes out less, that would be, that would be pretty awesome.
And right now, you know, in the past, uh, few projects, we've been able to combine FEMA funding with the project. And right now, that's not the case. And that could also change in the next year or two. But, you know, who knows what direction that's going to go. But, you know, we've been fortunate in that regard. You know, we did, um, the twenty-nineteen project. We supplemented that with sixteen million dollars we received from Hurricane Matthew. And then we did a separate project in South Naggs Head in twenty-twenty-two, which was completely FEMA-funded. So, um, if we, if we have anything declared in the next, uh, between now and the time we do the project, there, there's a chance we could couple that with the project.
I would rather pay the money than wish for, wish for some reason for them to give us money.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's not, let's not wish for that. Um, I did have, I did meet with somebody south of Naggs Head Pier, um, in South Naggs Head. And, uh, they spoke of how the beach seemed to have recovered a little bit, um, over the past several months. So that's, that's encouraging.
Yeah, and then southern, southernmost part, even, even the northern section, it's, it's gotten very wide this winter. It's unusual.
Yeah, that, that was their, their words. It was, it was unusual.
Mm-hmm. That's good.
I think we've had the, quite the strong onshore fetch recently that we had in the, in the fall. So I think that's helped a lot too.
Good, good. Okay.
Awesome.
Anything else?
Not about beach nourishment. Um, I think the last one is just, you know, any dialogue or discussion you want to have. I know today wasn't really meant to be, you know, anything specific. It was just kind of like the environment that we're going to be heading into with, you know, trying to balance the budget. Um, I know Andy talked a lot about, um, you know, filling in the shortfalls of, of what we have going on now, not only from a financial standpoint, but also from like a workload standpoint. Um, you know, we applied for those ARPA grants a couple of years ago and now we're, now we're in it. So, um, you know, I'm not, I know, you know, you had mentioned in our meeting about meeting with our, with the legislature. So I think some of those items that are being considered, it, I think we probably would not include those in the budget as far as us paying for them until we find out some more information. So whatever those final items might be that get, you know, recommended or asked for, I don't think we would put those in the budget, um, you know, if, if we think we have a chance of them getting appropriated. So that would include like the water line projects. Um, and I know Andy and y'all had discussed some other things. But, um, you know, in conjunction with that, it could possibly, looking at cutting some of the street work because I know our philosophy is now streets, um, street stormwater, water sidewalks kind of it all. So that could be one thing, is kind of pumping the brakes on that and kind of seeing what happens with the water line. Again, you know, not overpaying for like a dump truck that had went up sixty percent in a day. I mean, and I, staff is definitely on board with that as well. So they understand that we're not trying to get back to the, it's like not the low-hanging fruit. It's just, it doesn't make sense to pay that much. Um, and I think that is it.
Well, you, with the water lines, as I said, you know, with the, um, CIP, if we do get seven to ten million dollars for AC line replacements, there's going to be a, a pressure to spend that money within a certain amount of time so that we'll have to focus on those areas. And right now, you know, David has this thing planned out over five to ten years and that's spread out. Then that, that, those projects would then get concentrated in the first two or three years.
Right.
So we'd be doing like the north side of Naggs Head Cove from Danube North. We'd do all of Vista Colony. We'd do a bunch of sections in South Naggs Head in between the highways. And we have to get all that done fairly quickly. So it's a good thing, but it, it does create pressure to get it done. And, um, so again, it's a, it's a reason why perhaps we would not include a street stormwater water project in the FY twenty-six budget to wait and see what happens.
If we, if we got one of those allocations of funds, it would, I guess it would depend on how the bill was written. But if we got, you know, we, we've asked them for, for funding to replace water lines. If there are, if we decide to do a project with their philosophy and there are other components of that, like if we decide we're going to do some stormwater at the same time or we're going to pave, we're going to incur those costs separately outside of what the allocation is that we get for the water line. So we will, we will have some cost additionally.
That's right.
For, for those. It does mean that we need to stay pretty close to our lobbyists and, and our legislators over the next month or two to really have a better sense of what's going on as, as we're developing budget.
It's a, it's a good point because, you know, we, it could, if we wanted to do all of the streets work at the same time like we've been doing, that, that might create an affordability problem for us. But, you know, our goal has always been to at least do the stormwater and water work ahead of the streets. So we, we could still have the option to put the water lines in, come back later on and do the streets. But as long as we're not paving before we're doing the water and stormwater, we're okay.
Right, okay.
Those are the things we would have to look at. I think that's all we have.
Can't think of anything else unless there's any specific questions or expectations.
Well, it sounds like you're headed in the right direction.
Trying, definitely have our cut work out, or work cut out for us. But this gives us good direction that we're kind of all on the same page of.
Yes.
Yeah.
I like almost the forced pause on not paying too much for something that we shouldn't. It's almost like it's forcing us to stop and.
Well, hopefully if all of the other places do the same, then that would create supply and demand, you know? So, I mean, kind of like, hey, we're, so, you know, it'll be, who knows?
The revenue's changing and the volatile markets and all this stuff. It's just, you know, to sort of slow down and, and kind of see what's going to, what's happening. Because now we're entering in, you know, what is the trend going to be? We've been in this upward trend of shared revenues for so long that, like, it's, it'll, it'll be good to see what, how it's going to, going to go.
And unfortunately, our budget, yeah, our budgeting season, which is starting, which has already started this particular year is going to be one of the most tumultuous years in our economy in a, in a while. And it's going to last, you know, the next six months or so is probably going to be pretty, pretty wild. Um, we can all, all hope that it will even out at least after that. But, um, but, but it does mean that your, you folks are budgeting in a fairly difficult set of circumstances.
We also, uh, public, what Commissioner Sanders brought up with the public works and saving us money and storing those vehicles. Like if there's a time that we need to make them last longer.
Now might be.
Yeah, we've got the garage for it, so it's, it's kind of a perfect storm.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Seaver, anything? Good, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, that concludes our budget workshop for today.
Thank you.